The November 28th meeting of the College Place City Council to order. Ms. Nyhagen, would you please provide our prayer and our pledge of allegiance?
Our dear Heavenly Father, we're so thankful to come here to do the business of the city, Lord. We ask that you would guide us and direct us in our decisions that we make. I thank you so much for our wonderful staff here at College Place and our fire and police departments. We're so blessed here. We ask, Father, also that you would bless our men and women in the military that serve so that we may hold meetings like this. We thank you for the rain and we thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I would like to welcome, before public comment period, I'd like to welcome Boy Scout Troop 393 who's with us this evening. Thank you. This is going to be a really entertaining evening with a lot of things going on, so you'll have a lot of things to talk about as you earn your merit badges, because we're dealing with everything from garbage to taxes that go through there. So it is now time-
They can take a nap if it gets boring.
Yeah.
Oh, it's very exciting.
Meanwhile, back at the ranch, it's now our time for our public comment period. Anybody wishing to address the College Place City Council, please step to the microphone and state your name and address. Seeing no one, we have a consent agenda that is to approve this evening's agenda. Approve the council minutes from November 14th. Approve the 2018-2020 International Association of Firefighters contract and approve our consent agenda.
We approve the consent agenda.
It's been moved by Ms. Nyhagen, seconded by Ms. Sherman. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. The first of our public hearings is our budget hearing and presentation. Ms. Kilgore, the floor is yours.
Okay, so this is the public hearing on our final proposed budget for 2018. So there's a lot of review in here from the preliminary budget presentation, but I thought it was a good idea to just kind of rush over everything. So just kind of some highlights of things that we're continuing for 2018 in this budget is the continued implementation of fiscal policies. So the council approved earlier this year, like, phase one of our financial policies, and those included, among other things, some budget policies, including minimum ending fund balances for certain funds, and segregation of operating expenses from capital, and also identifying dedicated funding sources for specific types of capital. So those have been, I've tried to incorporate those into this budget. Also, I did an in-depth analysis of the recurring versus non-recurring costs, making sure that recurring revenues are sufficient to support recurring expenditures. In addition, I continued the equipment replacement program for this coming year, which is just setting aside money on a continual basis to provide for the purchase of equipment as it is needed to be replaced in the future. And then, we talked about last time that we had a shortage of sustainable recurring revenues, and in the meantime, since our preliminary budget hearing, we've had a couple budget workshops and a lot of discussion about that, and so I have incorporated some revenue streams in this version of the budget that actually fill that void. So the total budget, beginning fund balances, we're going to open up the year with just under $9 million. This is across all funds. Revenues, this is just new revenues, so not including the beginning fund balance, but new revenues are $24,163, and expenditures, $24,539. There's a spend down there of a little over $300,000, but it's on one-time expenditures. It's not a recurring loss. And that leaves us with an ending fund balance of about $8.6 million. So this is just a picture of the city as a whole, of the revenues. So you can see that the large portions of the revenues come from taxes right here at $5.2 million. Charges for goods and services, so that's going to include our water and wastewater revenue streams. State loans, this is the large Department of Health loan, the $4.5 million for well number one. And then, this loan receipt right here is the remaining balance of our revenue bonds that we just issued, because we were able to issue that with a drawdown, so we're only taking a certain amount this year. I'm anticipating about $3.1 million that will draw down next year. And then, operating transfers is also a large chunk of revenue, and that's revenue from one fund to another, so one fund's transferring money to another fund, and it becomes posted as revenue in the receiving fund. And then, the expenditure side, I just tried to show a graphic. This is really busy, but it kind of gives you an idea. Oh, that's funny. On my computer, that has a name on it. Yeah, I wondered what you were talking about. That's so weird. So that is actually capital. I don't know why it shows up like that on everyone else's computer but mine. So a large portion of our budget next year, our expenditures, is capital, and I believe it's, oh gosh, I can't even remember now. I want to say it's like five and a half million or so.
It's supposed to be $10,243,501.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, and then, operating transfers, this is the expenditure side of the transfers, so the fund that's actually pushing the money out to another fund, this is that side of it. Interest and debt service, so this is principal and interest payments on debt that we have as the city. Our largest actual department is law enforcement, so this is about $2.3 million is our law enforcement expenditures. The next largest here is the wastewater utility at about, just under $1.9 million. So that just kind of gives you kind of some perspective as to where our money's going. Okay, and then, I wanted to detail out here, Mike asked me to detail out the inter-fund transfers so you could see what those were being transferred for. So this is the largest portion. It's transfers for debt service at over $900,000. And then, this is transfers for reserve balances, so where we're building up the balances in funds for use in the future, mostly for capital. There's about $650,000 that we're transferring from one fund to another for operating expenses, and a big chunk of that is the transfer from the current expense fund to the street fund to sustain the activities of the street fund. I think that's about $430,000 or so. And then, the last portion here is transfers for capital, so that would be, for instance, a transfer from the water fund to the water capital fund for a project that we have scheduled. Okay, we're going to look at the current expense fund primarily, because that's where our biggest issues were, in the preliminary budget. So the total budget for the current expense fund is about $8.1 million. That includes the beginning fund balance. We have recurring revenues of about $5.8 million, and recurring expenditures of about $5.7 million. So if you recall, last time we saw this, we had a deficit of, I think it was around $285,000. So I was able to plug that hole and figure out a way to balance, so we're balanced now. So the net is about a $90,000 positive swing. Our minimum policy ending fund balance is 20% of recurring revenues, which ends up being about $1.16 million, and we are projected to end at $1,678,000, so we're good there too. Okay, looking at the revenues in the current expense fund, this is where we deposit all of our taxes, and that is our largest source of revenue, at over $5 million. Next, we have licenses and permits at about $300,000, and state entitlements at about $220,000, and it just gets smaller from there. I wanted to, this is in the newsletter that is just coming out here in the next couple days, but this is a diagram that we did of where a dollar bill of your property tax money goes. So for next year, we are budgeting to have about $1.9 million in property tax revenue. So each of those dollars that you pay for your tax bill, we only actually get 2.3 cents of each dollar that you pay. So the rest actually goes to school bonds, state school fund. This is the school operations and maintenance category, so you can see most of your property tax payment goes to schools, so this whole entire side is all to schools. And we get these two tiny little slivers right here. That's what we get out of each dollar you pay. And then, some money goes to the county, some money goes to the EMS levy. Other cities get about this much, and the port gets this sliver right here. Okay, so looking at the current expense fund expenditures, a total of about $6.5 million. So as I stated before, our largest expenditure department is the police department. The next largest area we spend in is inter-fund transfers from current expense to the other funds for the various purposes that I showed you in the previous slide. Then, fire and EMS is next, and then, community development and planning activities and building inspection are the next two biggest. The rest are pretty small. Okay, so now we're going to talk about some of the changes that are incorporated in this version of the budget since the last time we looked at this. So when I presented the preliminary budget, we had cable and solid waste taxes at 6%, which is how, is the amount that we have historically collected. In this version of the budget, I proposed an increase to 10%, and you can see the difference in revenue there. This is at the 6% that we had before, and this is at the 10%. Another change is that I have in this version of the budget, the implementation of a water and a wastewater utility tax, also at 10%. This is a tax that basically every other city I looked at has been imposing for a long time, and we are really the odd man out not having this tax, and it was kind of like the low-hanging fruit, I guess you could say, as far as what can we do to supplement our budget without going, playing outside the lines. So this is kind of something everyone else is doing, so that's why we're proposing it here. So anyway, implementing a water and wastewater utility tax added about $492,000 to the budget, which is substantial for our city. About $465,000 of that would come from our own College Place water and wastewater utility customers, and then, the rest would come from the other small water districts within our city limits. Okay, so some other changes incorporated in here. The FTEs that I have budgeted in the current expense fund are two patrol officers, a fire training officer, and an administrative position to help out with the community development and public works departments. All of these positions are historical positions that we've had, but they've gone away through attrition and then just not filling them, and we're really at a point where we have some real, pretty dire needs for the staff. So these positions here have been reinstated in this version of the budget. The preliminary budget included only one patrol officer, so one of these two was in there, and the community development admin position was also in there. So basically, I've added one more patrol officer and a fire training officer in this And the additional cost is about, just under $190,000 annually, at least for this next Another change to the current expense fund budget since preliminary budget is that we have increases in the transfers from current expense to the equipment replacement fund. So you can see the difference is in the blue, which is law enforcement, so it went from $62,000 to $175,000, and that is the purchase of four used patrol vehicles that we would like to implement a take-home program for our officers so they have a car with them at all times. So yeah, that's what I've spelled out here. So the four cars, and then, we had some really minimal budget amounts in the preliminary version for an animal control vehicle and for a detective car. Our detective drives the car, that's pretty obviously a police car right now, so it's hard for him to be stealth. So we need to get him something discreet, and, so anyway, that increase from the $62,000 to the $175 includes all of these. Other changes that impact current expense, an increase, I budgeted an increase in insurance expense. This is looking at changing insurance providers, and we can have further discussion about that later, but at least the money's in the budget if we decide we want to do that. This includes adding the board docs program for our commissions. We have quite a few commissions going on now, and it would save a lot of time and hassle if we could implement board docs for those as well as our council meetings.
Can I ask a question, or do we have questions later?
Yes.
Is that a one-time fee for a board doc, or is that annual?
The annual now is $3,000, and it would go to $6,000 annually to include as many boards as we want.
So $3,000 of this is for the board docs, and $1,500 is for additional hardware to allow the commissioners to have chromebooks or whatever. And then, there's about $7,000 in the current expense fund in increases to cost of living allowances. These are employees that we have under some kind of contract, whether it's union contract or just a professional services contract. We had our union negotiations for the fire, the fire department concluded, and so that kind of, that's most of what this is. And then, we also have in this version of the budget, long-term disability insurance added for all employees. This is a gap that we've had in our benefits package. I don't know that the city has ever provided it, but it's something that's pretty standard, and we haven't been doing, and it's a really reasonable benefit to provide, so we're proposing doing so. And then, the other piece that impacts current expense is that I increased our transfer to the facility maintenance reserve fund from $25,000 to $50,000. We have, we've been pulling substantial amounts of money out of that fund in 2017, and again, we have planned some projects in 2018, and I felt like it would be prudent to transfer a little more money to maintain some balance in there. Some of these are going to say no change at the top, and that just basically means that nothing about that fund was impacted by any of the changes that I've made, so we're going to kind of cruise through these pretty quickly. As you know, technology reserve is funded completely by current expense. We just operate all of our technology IT activities out of this fund, and nothing changed in there. Same with the employee benefit reserve fund. This is where we put money away for post-employment benefits, and we've been trying to grow the balance in that to cover our post-employment benefit liability, and we're pretty darn close. And again, this was not impacted. Okay, the street fund. This had minimal impact of any changes. Mostly, it was just some, a little bit of change in payroll and benefits allocations that kind of trickled through the whole city. So the total budget here is $741,000. Recurring revenues and recurring expenditures match, because this fund is basically sustained by the current expense fund and a transfer from current expense, and so I basically transferred exactly the amount that it was spending for the year. The minimum ending fund balance, according to our financial policies, is 60 days O&M, which comes out to $104,500, and $18, and we're ending with $104,544. This is just a pictorial view of our revenues in the street fund. This was a spike due to a capital project and some grant money that was, that was an influx of grant money that year for the project. You can see yellow's grants, so these yellow ones, we don't construct anything out of this fund anymore, so you won't see yellow going forward. So we just have the transfers. This is transfers from current expense, is the blue part, and then, motor vehicle fuel tax, you can see, is the green. Other is like, basically like a tiny bit of interest income and a few fees that we collect for different street cuts or whatever. Just talking about what the revenue streams are again here, and like I said before, street funds is supported by current expense to the tune of about 2/3. And look at the expenditures. Again, you'll see this coming year, we've budgeted for less expenditure than in the past, and that's just because we're not doing capital projects out of here anymore. Total operating costs of $625,000, that includes, or does not include. In addition, we have an $11,120 transfer to the equipment reserve fund for the street equipment, and FTEs are static. Okay, criminal justice and forfeited proceeds, these are really minimal funds. There's no changes associated with anything that's happened since preliminary budget in these two funds. Basically, criminal justice is paying for a portion of the school resource officer next year, and forfeited proceeds is transferring $10,000 to put towards the detective car. Debt service, no changes here. Cars project, our fire engine and the commercial drive project. And this just says we have, our policy mandated one year's worth of debt service in reserve for the fire engine and commercial drive, and then, the cars project, we don't keep one year in reserve, because it's pledged to be paid by the taxpayers. Fund 320 is our street capital contribution fund. There is no change at all to this fund. This is just where we deposit money from developers as they do projects that impact our streets. REIT 1, real estate excise tax, no change to this fund. We're budgeting about $120,000 in revenue for next year. And, let's see, this fund will be paying for our chip seal program on an annual basis going forward, and that started in 2017. Also, we'll be seal coating the Whitman Drive multi-use path. REIT 2, just like REIT 1, only segregated, it's an additional quarter percent tax on real estate transactions. We budgeted for about $110,000 in revenue, and we're paying for a traffic study on Larch and some engineering for Alliance Park Pond project.
Oh, and Sarah, I just want to add with the traffic study on Larch, $50,000 of that's being covered by a grant from Community Economic Revitalization Board, so.
Okay, the street improvement fund. This fund had a small, not a small change. I guess we got some confirmation that we're doing our large fourth, fourth and academy overlay and sidewalk project out of this fund next year, and we did get confirmation that TIB will be funding that project for us. So what we're doing is taking, there is about a quarter million in TAP funds, I think. Is it a quarter or more?
It's about that.
Okay, a quarter. Okay, so those will be forfeiting basically back to the MPO, and TIB will be covering that portion. Okay, facility maintenance reserve fund. This is the fund that I was talking about. I increased the transfer from current expense from $25,000 to $50,000. We have the following products scheduled in this fund for next year. $40,000 for fire department HVAC kitchen and plumbing, $23,000 for cabinetry in their kitchens, $2,000 for an annex portico, and reconstruction of the south parking lot at City Hall for $45,000. This is the equipment reserve fund that we transfer money from the other funds to, to purchase equipment out of. So this was updated to reflect the increase in the police department transfers from, I think it was $62,000 to $175,000. So this just shows you how much each department is transferring. So fires, $221, police, $175, and on and on. And it turns out to be a total of $432,000 from current expense, and then, $11,000 from the street fund, which is basically from current expense too. No change in the economic development funds. This is just the, kind of, the closeout of the cars project, not much going on in this fund next year, other than hopefully paying minimal expenses on that project and then transferring the balance out to the street improvement fund. Okay, on to the water utility. This is just a list of all of- This is just a list of all of the funds that are associated with water utility. There's really no change to anything listed here. We're moving forward with the approved water rate increases that happened last year as a result of our financial study conducted by FCS Group. Let's see. We're doing two-hundred-thousand in rate-funded capital, so that'll be a transfer out of fund four-hundred, which is our operating fund for the water utility, and then it'll go to a capital fund. And then, we're doing one-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand in equipment replacement transfers from a water fund to a water capital fund. Also, minimum fund ending balances, sixty days O and M is our policy, that's about two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand, and we'll be ending with about six-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand. FTEs, nothing changed here, and we talked about segregating capital out of the operating fund. Nothing's changed with that. Okay, looking at recurring revenues versus recurring expenses. Recurring revenues of one-point-two-six-nine-million, expenses of one-point-three-seven-one-million. So, the net is negative about one-hundred-and-two-thousand, but that is according to the plan that was laid out by FCS Group for us. And basically, what we're doing is spending down excess reserves to mitigate the need to raise water rates as much in the next few years. And this is just a quick pictorial look at the revenue streams for the water utility. You can just see that they're going up as we implement our incremental rate increases. And expenses are, also, they look like they're going up a lot, but that's because this, a large part of this is a transfer of rate-funded capital money from operating fund to capital. And also transfers for equipment reserve, which we haven't always done. All of the projects and capital purchases for the water fund remain the same. There's been no changes to those since we saw the budget last. And the funding sources for those capital projects and purchases have not changed either. No changes to the debt service for the water utility and moving on to wastewater. No changes here. Highlights, we do have a ten percent increase in our operating basin usage rate on January first as a result of our rate study. These are just some larger things in the budget for next year. We are meeting our minimum fund ending balance policy. This would be the sixty days O and M, and we're at about twice that. Okay, I'm getting there, guys. I can tell I'm starting to lose you. Okay. Recurring revenues versus expenses, one-point-eight-million in recurring revenues, one point, just under one-point-seven-million in recurring expenses, so that's a net positive. Concerns really for the wastewater utility are long-term financial planning for large, significant capital needs. Just a quick look at what our revenues, they've been really pretty flat, but they will be going up next year as we implement that ten percent rate increase. And expenses will go up slightly, not a lot though. No change to projects, and no change to funding for those projects. No change to debt service. And this is almost our last fund, second to last. This is the equipment rental and replacement fund. This is where all of our maintenance and work on all of our equipment and vehicles happens. It's done in this fund, and then it's charged out to the funds that actually utilized its services. So, minimum funded in balance, sixty days, O and M will be fifty-three thousand. We're going to be meeting that by about double. This is just a quick look. We used to buy capital out of this fund. We're now buying that equipment out of the equipment reserve fund instead, so kind of see a drop here. That's just because we're not buying equipment out of here. This is just operating expenses now. And we spent down the fund balance in here on equipment in the last couple of years just to get down to where we're just kind of flush. And last but not least, our flexible spending account, or fund, is no change. In and out budget for two thousand, that should be eighteen, I'm sorry, is thirteen-thousand. And, recapping, beginning fund balances of about nine million, revenues, expenditures, ending fund balance of about eight-point-six, so spend down of three-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand. Are there any questions?
Mr. Peterson.
A couple real quick ones. The cost of the six vehicles at the very beginning of the presentation, another one-time expense?
The cost of the vehicles is a one-time expense.
So, that's in the budget for 2018. We probably won't see that repeated in 2019. We don't know. We may have replaced a vehicle, but.
Yeah, we would be on a regular replacement schedule, just a regular replacement schedule thereafter.
So, that impacted the expense budget 2018, but maybe.
It will impact future years a little bit because there's, there's an increase in maintenance and operation costs.
Purchases, so that's an expense that won't repeat itself.
Correct.
Okay. The other thing, the catch-up for the equipment vehicle, is it the equipment reserve fund or the replacement? That comes out of the expense also?
Current expense.
There's a catch-up on that also?
Yeah, so those catch-up contributions that you saw in that table have to do with the fact that we haven't been saving all along, so we're having to play catch-up for when those vehicles have expired.
And that may not repeat itself next, in 2019?
I think there's probably about four or five years, maybe, that we have continuing some catch-up.
Oh, okay.
But after that, it'll just be status quo.
And a quick question, if we were going to monitor something, of course, we have to do this probably with the timing with property tax inflows, but when we look at this budget in 2018, it would be the current expend, the current expenditure, the five million portion, that we would want to look at to see how we're tracking? Is that a correct assumption?
To look at property taxes?
Well, what I'm looking at is, we're guessing what the staffing costs are going to be, what are insurances and things, and some of those are estimates. As we look into 2018, the, the current expenditure, expense fund, I guess I should say, that would be the one that we would want to monitor to see if expenses are tracking. Do you agree with that?
I do.
That's the five million.
That's the big fund where most of our operations are paid for.
Bonds and things that are pretty well.
Right.
So, what the timing on that review would be next year? Would it be like once or twice a year? What are your thoughts on that? To see how we're tracking?
Well, I monitor on a monthly basis to start with. I look at monthly budget position reports to make sure, or to see where we're at compared to budget, so I always have an eye on that. But probably like a mid-year look would.
Because the property tax, once, twice a year?
Yeah.
Does that throw up? Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, like you said, property tax is not a steady stream during the year. It comes in two lumps, so probably we would have a better idea after the first round of property tax.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Other questions for Ms. Gilmore?
Lots of hard work.
Thank you very much. There is lots of hard work.
I'd like to say something, though. I think those Boy Scouts ought to automatically win their merit badges for heading the city.
I think they're, I think they're working very hard and will eventually get there.
We appreciate it. They're our major council.
So, with that, I'd like to open the public hearing on the final 2018 budget. Anyone wishing to testify for or against the 2018 College Place City budget, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and address. Once again, anyone wishing to testify for or against the 2018 budget for College Place, please step forward, state your name and address. And one final time, anyone wishing to testify for or against the 2018 budget for the City of College Place, please step forward, state your name and address. Seeing no one, I would accept a motion to close the public hearing. It's been moved by the chairman. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been submitted by Mr. Bobbitt. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Public hearing is closed. Thank you very much, Ms. Gilmore.
Thank you.
We will have a budget adoption on the December 12th meeting. Mr. Rizzatello, capital improvement plan.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Lisa, could you pull up the spreadsheet, the summary one? I'll just go over this very briefly because elements of this were already in the budget presentation. There's two documents attached to this agenda item. The one really long one, which is over a hundred pages, if you want some good late-night reading, is the semifinal capital improvement facility plan. It goes six years. We've done this informally in the past, but never formally in like a full book format. So, the book format, when you go through it, the beginning part says, what is the capital improvement plan? This also includes equipment replacement in it. And then, the later sections of the plan, there is one page dedicated for every project, and it gives a summary of the project, a picture if appropriate, map of where it's at, and then where the money's coming from ideally, and then what years it'll transpire. Really, capital improvement plans for this duration is really a wish list. There is really no crystal ball what you will accomplish or not. A lot of it's really dependent on grant funding, to be frank. This document is used basically to show that we're serious about certain projects, so that way if grant opportunities arise, we can show the document that is in our longer-term plan, and it increases our chances of giving the grant award for the respective project. Looking at the summary table, the ending price plan there for six years is a lot of money. It's a summary for all capital improvement projects in general, is a little north of sixty-two million dollars if you take into account everything. The summary spreadsheet has stuff subdivided by department. Some of the higher-profile projects is for administration, for instance, rehabbing, community development side, we still aren't done with that, server replacement in the future in Board Docs Plus, fire department, the wildland engine, the SCBA's, and then vehicle replacement in the far future. Police department vehicle replacement's a big one, and then at the tail end of this plan, potentially, planning for a newer fire station, police station. For parks, Lyons Park is on there since we've gotten done with Kiwanis Park, and then also a park purchase. This likely would be financed with the majority of development fees or developer. That typically comes online as a new development gets planted. Likely, it would be west of College Avenue, but that's dependent. Stormwater, that utility does not exist yet. However, we are under a decree from Department of Ecology to do that. This is just taken, a ballpark guess. The sweeper, we know that needs to be replaced, and we're going to have to do a regional stormwater facility. Again, that's a ballpark guess. Streets, chip seal program, fourth and Academy Way, C Street, all those higher-profile projects are in there, and then chip seal. As you can see, those streets take quite a bit of money. Wastewater, the wastewater treatment plan is the primary one. That was a ballpark guess because really, when the facility plan gets done and when we have the constructive dialogue with Department of Ecology, they'll really determine where we go in the future. And then proactive replacement of the neighborhood lines. Likewise, water's in the same boat, proactive replacement in neighborhood lines as we're doing the street projects, replacing both wells, which is pretty key. Well, number two is the primary one, which we are using the bond money for. Well, number one is contingent on the state getting their act together and passing the capital budget, so we'll see what happens there. And then, the water right, which went forward last council made it. So, in summary, I just want to say departments essentially have the greatest pool of resources on this. Number one is, for the six years, is wastewater, just north of twenty-seven million. Number two is streets is seventeen million, which is challenging because with the streets, as we've said in the past, even though it's its own fund, that's being heavily subsidized by current expense, so that continues to be a festering situation. And streets is seventeen million, and then water is at nine-point-eight million, and then the other departments are below that amount in more marginal amounts. So, really, this is a wish list, a summary, a little bit of a roadmap going forward next six years. So, that's a summary of this document.
Thank you, Mr. Rizzatello. Any questions for Mr. Rizzatello? Seeing none from the council, I'd like to open a public hearing on the adoption of the capital improvement plan. Anyone wishing to testify for or against the capital improvement plan, please step forward, state your name and address. Once again, anyone wishing to testify for or against the capital improvement plan, please step forward to state your name and address. And one final time, anyone wishing to testify for or against the capital improvement plan, please step forward and state your name and address. Seeing no one, and I'd accept a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
It's been moved by Ms. Nyhagen.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? All in favor of this?
Closing.
For closing, yes, for closing the public hearing.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Moving along, presentations, base disposal, couple, or price improvement.
Every year, around October, November, Derek Dietrich, President of BBI, comes and gives a presentation going over what's happened as well as what's proposed. There'll be increases that, so today, we talked about CPI and those type of increases. He'll also be talking, and he'll explain a little bit the recycling issue that we're having and experiencing in the country, and then he'll be able to answer any questions that he may have. So, Derek?
Mr. Dietrich.
Mayor, Council, Derek Dietrich with Base and Disposal, and Dave Adwell, pricing manager and helps with the contracts. As mentioned, there'll be a little bit of what happened this year data, but I purposely suppressed that because there's a lot that's going to happen forward. So, I'll kind of go through the presentation. By all means, please, if there's a question, stop, ask your question. Let's have an active debate, because again, there are potentially a lot of moving parts here. Just want to make sure I'm addressing all the questions that might be here. Briefly go over 2017. We'll talk about curbside recycling and global markets and how that's impacting the cost of recycling. Then after that discussion, I'll go into unlimited collection. As you're all aware, there's a new contract that was agreed upon, and the major provision in that is residential unlimited collection. We'll go through those features of that. Then we'll talk about the 2018 rates, and then we'll kind of summarize and make sure that I've addressed all the questions, we'll get through that. Okay, so 2017 at a glance, there's been a 3.6% increase in the total number of customers, and so that's just normal population growth, that's a good, a good amount of growth, no idea of social filling that. Commercial, no change at all, pretty static. And then recycling, there's been a nine and a half percent increase in the number of recycled subscriptions from the prior year. And again, that's a voluntary program, so there is some demand within that program. Curbside recycling, so this has been the topic in our industry this year, mostly in the second half of this year. And so, it's what it is, China has a policy, they call it the national sort policy, which I find an interesting title for it, but that's what they've done. What's the purpose of this? The purpose of this is to clean up the waste stream that goes into China. The west, the United States, particularly the west coast, since it has easy and cheap shipping back into China, that's where the vast majority of recycled commodity goes to. There is a fair amount of domestic mills that use cardboard. Newspaper is kind of a thing in the past, the demand for newspapers decreased, but a lot of the newspaper stays domestic. Pretty much everything else is sorted, it goes on a ship, and it goes to China. China has cheap labor, and China manufactures a lot, and so that allows them to grab this material. What's been happening is a lot of waste material is contaminated, and so China has a policy to saying, no more, we want to have a good, clean commodity. And so you see the threshold of 0.5% contaminants. To put that into perspective, a lot of the mills or MERS, material recovery facilities that were in the United States, and I don't primarily talk about the west coast, they have a policy or a threshold of around 5% contaminants. So that really puts that into perspective. And it's not unheard of for thresholds of 7% and even up to 10% leaving these facilities. So I think it was in June of this year, China says, okay, we want you to be at a point and a half. So you can see, let's just take the five, which is probably pretty low, down to one and a half. That caused major disruptions in the industry. And so then beginning in January 1, the threshold was 0.3, but they were a little forgiving, and they modified that about a week ago to 0.5. To be truthful, the industry can't hit it. What they're going to combat this, or usually combat to meet this new threshold, is they're literally bringing on more labor, and they're slowing down the belts. They're literally slowing down the belts by 50% to have more time in front of the workers to pick more of the contaminants out. And so simple math tells you the throughput of the industry is cut in half. The cost is increased by some amount. And so that is sorting itself out now. What that means is the value of this material, which used to be a positive amount, is now a negative amount, and it's been getting further negative. And so the question in front of a lot of communities are, what's the viability, well, I almost say the viability of the program, what is the price threshold that we want to endure through these programs? And so, anyway, that's, I think, the quick summary of what's happening to the market. And I guess should go a little bit further, what's the future going to hold? Nobody knows. I'll offer my personal opinion on this one. China's pretty smart. There's no other economy that absorbs this type of material. I think what they're doing is resetting the price, and they're doing it in a dramatic and bold way. Their economy demands this material. Now, how much they can supply domestic versus how much they need from the U.S., don't know that, but at some level, they need to receive this material, so they can't shut it off tomorrow. And so my gut is, they're going to bend on the 0.5, but to what degree, I don't know. And so anyway, the industry's in flux, and we'll see where this thing shakes out. These right here represent, so I guess we'll kind of follow the slide, what's in the rate? Well, lettering the rates are the collection cost, that's what Basin Disposal recovers to take the trucks and the personnel to collect it. Then there's the recycled processing, and that is indicated by Volvo Recycling, processing cost of $35. That's what Basin pays the local vendor to receive the material, to do a quick sort of the material, not a deep one, but just a quick, to get the bad material out, so to speak, fail it, reload it in the trucks to ship it out to market. Okay? And then the bottom bullet there is the monthly net commodity value, and that's determined by the international markets. And so if we go up to January, we can see that there was a positive price of $7, and then it was netted off by a cost of 35, so you're at a net negative 28. Now, let's go a year ago, I obviously don't know what it was a year ago, but I guarantee it was a positive price. Let's presume the market was worth $50, 50 minus 35, you're still positive. So there's been a decline, and then this year, there's been a dramatic decline indicated by negative $51. And then literally in November, the last price that we received was negative 36, and so negative 71 per ton. And then we extrapolated and just assumed the same amount of tonnage, which is the 26,000 pounds that we collect within the city of Ecology Place, and then we assume the same rate. And then the far right column is the cost to handle the material, to ship it to market, to mail. And so let's pick an easy number of 1,038, let's call it $1,000. If the current pricing holds, let's call that $12,000 a year to manage that material. And so the true expense with admin dilemma pro forma on December was essentially $7,000. So you can see the change in the market. So, the current rate for voluntary recycle recycling is $4.60 per month. What we've done the last number of years are measure the credit for the debit, the over, the under, the commodity value, and then do an adjustment to that 4.60. So if there was a net positive, let's say the 4.60 would go down to $4.30, if it was negative, $4.70, that's the process. If we take that $6,800 or $6,900 deficit or cost for the material, and the program continues on into next year, that price would be $5, it would go from 4.60 to 5.31 a month. And again, that difference is to recoup the $6,900 cost. And so we made an assumption, and I'm going to do the worst-case estimate, is what we did was take the $1,000 cost and say, okay, that's the worst that we've experienced this year, and let's assume that rolls out every month into next year. What would the cost then be? $6.57 a month. And then the last assumption was, hey, if the city decides, for whatever reason, policy to terminate the curbside recycling service, what would that $6,900 cost be to then spread it out across the current customer base of recycled service, which is 795, 790 more customers, then that would be a one-time charge of 8.71 to recoup that cost of processing. And so that, I think, frames the different options for curbside recycling. And then I would say, if the program, if the program continues into next year and the markets continue to go negative, it may be appropriate to do a more frequent rate adjustment instead of an annual one that we've been doing, to do quarterly or every six months, that way we track the over, the under on what the market is. So with that, before I move on to others.
Mr. Peterson.
Thank you. The 8.71, you said a one-time charge, can you, I followed your explanation here, but are you talking about a one-time charge on the, on the bill to the customer?
Oh, yeah.
You're not talking about, yeah, because you obviously don't want to spread 8.71 over 12 months.
Correct.
Yeah.
So the mechanic, the mechanics of it would be, if the service is terminated, then on the last bill for those who are currently subscribing, to then allocate that cost to those. Then the other decision, which is really, has not been discussed, and I'm not putting anything on the table, but whether to take that and spread that out or the whole rate base, which, you know.
So your projections here, with the first, the first presentation of the point, 0.05, you know?
Yep, they come out of the contamination.
Right. How does that, is that in your, this is the worst case?
The worst case really means we just took the worst market price, which was in October, and then made that assumption.
And we don't know what the future price is going to be.
No, no.
Yeah.
And again, as I've thought about this the last couple of months, when it first happened, there was severe doom and gloom in the industry, for good reason. Literally, shipping containers weren't going to China, stuff was stacking up, what do we do with it? That initial panic has kind of gone away, and the market has actually gone down a little bit, evidenced by the prior slide. Now, again, my personal belief on this is, China needs the material, so they're not going to stick to that 0.5 and say, okay, nothing comes in. I think, I think they're testing the market, and they've realized that nobody else can absorb this material, and if they do this, they can reset the pricing to where they're going to get paid for the material that they need. That's, that's my guess as to what's going on, and that may take a year to shake out. You know, and to put some more size to it, let's pretend we're in Seattle, let's pretend we're San Francisco, Portland, major city contracts are in place that collect this material every day. And so the supply, and that's kind of the imbalance here, is, and I always use the example of scrap metal or gold, right? So if the market demands more gold, what do they do? They bid the price up. That incentivizes all of us to find the metal and supply it into the market. In this market, it doesn't work that way, because you have a contractual obligation and a cultural expectation to keep feeding into the market when the market's saying, we don't want it, which keeps driving that price lower and lower and lower. There's no relief, there's no pricing mechanism in there. And so I just tell you that is, how this thing shakes out, I don't know, I don't know.
Go ahead.
It's a pretty small numbers. I mean, I think a lot of people would be willing to, well, I can't speak for everyone, that people would be willing to pay for this, and I see we have, you know, more, more conversation coming here in the next few minutes here, but does Basin kind of want to get out of the recycling business?
I'm completely neutral to it. My view is and always has been, I'm a service provider, and I always tell my customer service reps, it doesn't matter whether it's garbage or gold, meaning if it has no value or positive value, we're a transporter, and that's what our job is. And so further evidenced by the, not all the contracts, but the numerous contracts that I have where we provide curbside recycling, Basin doesn't internalize that market cost. I know what I do, I supply personnel and trucks, and that cost is pretty stable, but I'm not good at predicting what the market is. And so what I've tried to do, and it's not in this contract, but in other contracts, is my pricing is stable on that, so I can control that, but the market stays on the city. And so then the city remits the over, the under, and you know, in good times, they're taking the positive, and in negative times, they're pushing it back out. I think that's the best structure. Now, in this one, it's not, that's why we true it up year to year. And so, no, I'm neutral as to where the program is, and there's no question, there's a, it's been growing by nine and a half percent, there's a fair amount of the population out there that gets a benefit from it. Now, the question is, and I really don't have a good case history on this, is if that price continues to go up, at what point does the consumer say, okay, enough? Then at that point, you do the tailspin. If the subscription base decreases, then the per-unit cost is going to go up. Is it going to happen at $6, $7, $10? I don't know.
Well, that's the question, I, real quickly, I'm sorry, I don't want to.
No, please, absolutely.
So if you don't recycle it, it goes in the garbage can, and then a year from now, we'll be having a discussion about the fact that there's a lot more garbage going to the landfill, and we have to increase the rates to cover for.
It would, but in theory, by math, let's go two years ago when there was a positive credit, that was helping subsidize or suppress the rate at the curve for the service. Now it's going negative, now, let's say it's now at negative 71, negative 86 on that one month, well, guess what? And I was cautious not to do this, but I think it's a good comparison, is disposal rates are roughly $85, $86. And so the point I'm making is, whether it happens in two carts or one cart, the accounting should wash it out.
But on one, the city would pay, and on one, the customer would pay.
That's right. Yeah. Ultimately, the customer's going to pay it, and I always like to close everything back up to a total billed enough per month, let's say it's $100,000, okay? That happens in different channels, different service levels, but at the end of the day, it would wash out to be the same.
Yeah.
With the caveat that it takes more capital and men to pick up a second waste stream. But the other consideration is, you can't turn that on and off without some repercussions. You know, if it's turned off, and that capital equipment is stored or left somewhere else, there's a cost to it, or it's deployed somewhere else, and then let's say, six months later, the market clears itself, the price goes up, let's turn the thing back on again, it's all possible, but there's a little bit of collateral cost to do that.
Ms. Selby.
So a couple of questions. One falls directly after what you were just saying. So this service termination cost only includes paying back what would otherwise go into the rate increase because of the negative from last year?
Exactly. So.
But it seems like there would be a cost to that demobilization, like, you know, picking up all the old bins and blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
So do you have any ideas what that would look like, or?
I'll try not to go into my economist accounting mode, but I'll be briefly technical about it. Yeah, there's capital cost, there's some capital that is dedicated to serve this, these routes. And at one level, you can just immobilize it, park it in the corner, without a cost to it, but in the long run, I look at books and say, you know, what capital did I deploy, and what's an appropriate return? And in some small manner, it would then get reflected across the rate base. Now, what you would not incur is the expense, the current expense of operating it, right? The way I view it is, capital's deployed, capital needs a rate of return, expense, if there's no one incurred, then there's no need to recoup that expense. And so the savings would be the expense, but at some level, there'd be capital cost, if that makes sense.
And next question, you said our rate of participation would have 9.5%. What's the approximate percentage of customers that are doing recycling at this point?
Well, 780, 790 out of a total base of 2,400 customers.
I can't actually read those numbers.
And of that, and I'll probably confuse it a little bit, of that, the participation rate for those who subscribe is very high, which makes sense because they're voluntary subscribing, and that is about 70, low 70, let's just say 72, 73% of people who subscribe put it out on Flexion Day. And I'll contrast that by a mandatory program. Under a mandatory program, a lot of people who are forced into the program really don't want to do it, set-out rates in those programs are anywhere from 35% to maybe 60%.
Press on.
All right. Okay, unlimited pickup service. This is something that Basin has done since the early 80s, and then the discussion was brought up here recently, and the decision was meant, was decided to go to this. I like it, because I always make the joke that garbage men aren't that smart, and so we just bake it into one average rate, and then once a year, we measure what the total amount of garbage was, and then you kind of set the rates from there. And it was interesting, we were going through the data before I came up here, and there was in, I think it was year-to-date, 2017, $4,000 of extra charges that Basin applied to the residents here in College Place, and there was about 1,200 instances of that. So let's, again, do easy math, let's say about 100 times a month, there is an extra bag, box, bundle, whatever, that then requires the driver to write it down, go to our accounting system, key it in the bill, and then you're surprised at the end of the month with, oh, did I put that out or not? That takes a lot of work. This eliminates that. We measure, well, we will measure, in, let's say, 12 months, 18 months down the road, what the change of any of disposal was, and then level-set what the rates are in the future. So with that, what are the benefits? The benefits are, as long as you bag, box, bundle it, and it was generated by the household, from the household, you can put it out three feet away from the garbage can, and the reason we do that, and it's always important, is when the truck comes by, he can grab the can, and then get out, pick up the extras, load the can up again, and then dump it again. And I shouldn't waste council time on this one, but what people like to do is put garbage around the can, which then means the driver has to stop, clear the can. So anyway, Christmas time, if the in-laws come over and you have a lot of garbage, no worries, put it out, and pick it up. So, like, again, so here's the important, here's the important thing. So I'm mindful of, you folks get phone calls, staff gets phone calls, when people see changes, what's going to change? The idea here is, and the graphic is, we want to put out 96-gallon carts by default. And the reason for that is, whether a consumer uses 96 gallons or not, that increases the, decreases the possibility that there's going to be an extra outside the cart. Every time we have to stop the truck, lift that extra up, that is an operational expense. So we want to keep it into the car and get the benefits of the automated collection system. So roughly 1,300 customers are subscribing to 64-gallon, roughly 1,300 customers are subscribing at 96. So what will happen prior to January 1, if you're ready for the new program, those who have 64s will get migrated up to the 96-gallon cart in anticipation of a January 1 service date. The 32-gallon, what was decided, was those who have 32-gallon size can stay at the 32-gallon size. It's called a grandfather status. Now, it's subject to some conditions, and the first and obvious condition is, hey, if you have a 32-gallon can, and you put a whole bunch of extras around, all right, you should go into the unlimited collection, then at that point, we'll bump you up to the 96-gallon cart. But currently, it's, the 32's our grandfather again. With that, and I probably talked about a fair amount of this one, unlimited pickup lid charges, that's what garbage men call for. If you drive up to a can or container, and the lid's up like this because there's more garbage into it, the traditional garbage company charges you for that, because there's more garbage in there. That goes away. You never charge for it anyway. That goes away. Extra charges, again, if the in-laws come over, you have a party, and you have a bunch of stuff, we don't charge for it, we pick it up. For residential car tires or passenger car tires, we'll pick up each year without charge. Bulky items, couches, appliances, refrigerators, you put them out, we pick them out. Now, it's, but the caveat that we do pick it up for free, or the one price for refrigerators, what we do is pass through the freon charge. So if there's no freon in it, we can pick it up without charge and recycle it, but if there's freon in it, what we do is we pick it up without charge, but if it costs us $35 or $40 at that contractor to evacuate it, we pass that charge through to the consumer. So that's how that works. And then, quite honestly, we didn't set this yet, but there's a minimal charge for a second cart. And this is what the consumers do over time when they get comfortable with this program. Other times, in the summertime, when you have grass, it's easier to just use or rent a second cart. Now, traditional garbage contracts, the existing contract, if it's, you know, $20 for one cart, you get a second cart, it's $20. Under this model, it's not, because the total average cost of that disposal component's in on the first rate. Truthfully, the charge for that second cart is kind of a pricing signal. In other words, you don't want it to be free, because you may call up and say, give me 15 of them. And so you pretty much just set a rental charge for that cart to where it's easily accessible by the person, whereas, yep, I want to grab one or two extra carts that would be summertime amusement versus putting out extras. And so that's a feature of unlimited collection.
Mr. Peterson.
So a refrigerator, is that encouraged individuals to become HVAC experts?
The problem that is encountered is, in order to seek the cheap or free, yeah, they can clip the freon unit, and then when no one's looking, put it in the garbage can. And so it could be the best policy, and this is, I guess, a decision to go through, is no matter what, charge a $35 back.
Because otherwise, you have to rely on it going to the environment.
That's right. Yeah. So that certainly is a policy decision that I can support.
And the perspective, when you go back, if you have somebody, if you replace your refrigerator, they will charge you 50 bucks.
That's right.
Not you, but.
Correct. Yeah, yeah, exactly.
But that would encourage bad behavior, maybe.
Yeah, exactly. So we're, anyway, so there's a little snippet of a brochure that we're still trying to finalize, but we'll go out in the mail, and we'll run it by staff here before we do it, because there's a lot of notification that we need to do to the customers. One, to let them know, hey, January 1, you have a new program, here's the provisions for it. The next thing that we need to notify people about is the timeframe that we're going to come by and pick up the 65-gallon carts, and swap them out with the 96-gallon carts. And right now, that's slated for December 11 through the 21st to do that. And then if there's any change or movement in the recycle program, that would get into a notification that would have to go out. And so with that, the blended rate, this is the word that we coined the last number of weeks, and admittedly, I'm getting older, a little more senile, but if we're going to move everybody up into a 96-gallon rate, we're going to have to change the rates. And so the whole premise, when we were talking with staff and the council subcommittee, was we're going to be revenue-neutral in 2018 as we go into this new program. And the idea is to go through 12 months of experience, maybe even 18 months of experience, and then measure what the effects of the summer program are. Then at that point, we will then level-set the rates to match what the expense is. And so, okay, if the 64-gallon carts are going to go away, and there was going to be a 96, here's the simple math. Today, the rate is $17.90 for 64, $24.50. There's, you know, on average, 1,300, 1,400 customers in each category. There's the average monthly revenue, simple math. If the average revenue from those two sizes is $57,000, and the average customer counts 27, let's divide math. And so what's going to happen is roughly half of the consumers who have a 64 are going to see an increase from $17.90 to $21. This is before CPI. But hopefully, that will be softened by the fact that they have unlimited collection. Now, the other side is roughly half of the customers are going to see a rate decrease from $24 to $21. And so that is the proposed way to handle this shift into the 96-gallon container.
I have a question.
Ms. Nahin.
Some people, I would never be able to use a 94-gallon trash can. I couldn't even get it out to my place. Are we, we're going to have to take it? We're going to, do we have to take it? I have a 64 now, and I just can barely get it up.
Yeah.
And I live alone, you know, so.
Yeah. That is, you're vocalizing what really the first and probably the most predominant question will be of those customers.
A lot of seniors.
Yeah, exactly. I don't have the best answer, the one that I've watched my whole life, and when we've done these, that is the concern, but once people get used to it and comfortable with it, that concern kind of goes away. Now, what I will say, and I won't make a judgment of whether it's right or wrong or different, but in order for the automated system to really work, and for the unlimited collection to really work, we want to have enough capacity across the whole system to get it into that cart. Because there's no question, over time, as people use the unlimited provisions, a little bit more garbage is going to hit the waste stream. And so it doesn't, from a system point of view, make much sense to have a small container, knowing that on average, it's going to flow over outside that container. And so by moving to the 96, again, there's more capacity, higher probability it's going to stay inside the container. So that's a change, for sure.
Mr. Peterson.
The original discussion on this was that it would be neutral. This is, this is a change.
To the consumer.
Because I, you know, and I, look, you got, we're learning as we're going along here. That's, you know, I understand that completely. The original discussions were that we're going to go to larger containers, and there would be no increase. And I understand when you're talking about some that have 96s, we'll see a decrease in others, but.
Yeah.
So this is, this is a little bit of a change. I mean, we're not talking about dramatic dollars here, but would you agree this is a change from what we discussed maybe earlier?
Absolutely. And that's why I made this joke early on.
That's okay.
Of getting senile. Because it's painfully obvious that this is a conclusion. I won't state that it's that conclusion, but certainly a logical conclusion. And my colleague pointed it out to me, and it went over my head, and then finally, it's something I go, you're right, there needs to be an adjustment here. And so this is a change.
Yep.
No question about it. And that's why I wanted to put it in front of counsel, see if this is the right way to do it. Now, let's offer a different one. Again, from my point of view, from the contractor's point of view, we are going to be revenue-neutral down the road. It could be that there is not a blended rate. Now, I still want to affirm, if that's a word, that the right model is the 96-gallon cart. So if everybody's physically at a 96-gallon cart, but yet we maintain previous pricing, well, then that gets confusing, right? So yes, this was something in our, yeah. So anyway, that's an issue that will generate some calls.
Ms. Selby.
So a couple of questions. I thought a couple of slides back, when you talked about grandfathering into 64, or the 32, that it also said something about senior citizens could keep the 64.
Yeah, great question. So to be clear, we're just blending the 64 and the 96, okay? And so what is not up there is the 32. And the 32 is not up there, because indeed, they're grandfathered in, and so their rate will be essentially the same rate.
But, no, but I'm thinking, this is senior, yeah.
Yeah. What I'm doing is I'm clearing the table of the other ones to give to the last issue, and you're exactly right. What is in the new contract is a new service level. And that new service level is called senior slash low income. And so what we've done in the contracts is put that in there, and it's intended to match the city policy or the city ordinance on who is eligible for that criteria at a lower rate. And so it's intended to match whatever policy's in place, and so those who are eligible for that can elect to get that status. Now, since that status is a lower rate, that is one deviation from the unlimited collection, because again, it doesn't make too much sense to have small containers out there, and in this case, at a subsidized rate, and still have all the same provisions. And so how I see this play out is, January 1, everybody's moved up, minus the grandfather 32, as they're moving up to the 96s, and then those who need the eligibility of that service level can certainly petition City Hall, make sure they match the criteria, and then at that point, we would then lower them down into a limited collection model of the senior slash low-income 64-gallon size.
I'm just wondering if for senior citizens, they could, we could maybe, so you don't have to take it out and bring it back, and Marge could keep her 64.
I think she has a 30, I think you have a 32, if you're only paying $14.
No, I don't know what, it's a 64, I think, it's a middle. I don't know.
If you have a 32, then you're fine.
We'll drive by your house tonight, Marge.
And my second question was, if we, which of these changes would require a change to the contract? So for example, if we said we want to change the recycle rate every three months rather than every year, or if we go to this blended rate, do either or both of those require change to the contract, or is that under the price adjustment provisions of the contract?
Yeah. So the good thing about the new contract is it has the appendixes in it, or appendices in it. And so really, I would look to staff direction after council decides how the rate schedule wants to look, and then at that point, we would put in the new rate schedule reflecting what that desire is. And so that's the flexibility of it. And then, and I really haven't rolled these out, but let's assume that curbside recycling is deemed to have a quarterly true-up. Then the beauty of the agreement, too, is then an eternal memo or note could be put in there, too, to say, okay, you know, the city authorizes the contractor to adjust rates on a quarterly basis. That way, it's memorialized, and it's flexible, is really the key thing.
Other questions? Press on.
Yep. All right, proposed rates. Okay, so this talks about the CPI. So all of these changes we talked about, right now, we're back into the normal mode. Normally, when I'm up here every year, I talk about CPI. That's what I'm talking about right now. Okay. So revenue pro forma, we're estimating December revenue, which is pretty predictable. There's gross revenue, the CPI letter, the index that went out, is 2.2%. You take 2.2%, there's a net increase in revenue of $16,000, which amounts to basically a 2.6% increase. And so let me kind of go off script here. Every couple of years, the landfill raises their rates. This year, last year, they raised it in February. This year, I think the next week, it's up for discussion at Wawa, and because of the delay, they won't be able to implement it, it passed until March. And so it's always my desire to not create changes to the consumers too many times. And so the initial thought here was, okay, let's not raise the rates in January if the landfill's going to raise their rates in March. And so the net effect of this is the CPI adjustment's 2.2%, but if we can press it over 10 months, March through the end of the year, then normalize out that 2.6% increase. And so people want to know what the net effect is, okay, the landfill, if they pass theirs, they're going to raise 5.4%. The CPI's 2.6%, the net-net effect is 3.65%, is what the consumer's going to see from those two adjustments. Now, with that said, the other thing that we realized, or I realized, was, okay, it's a good goal to not change the rates within a couple of months, but by virtue of going to the 96 unlimited, we're probably going to change the rates anyway, and so it may be a fact that the consumers are going to get touched with changes January and in March. So that's another thing that I wanted to point out, to make sure that we understood that, or there's a way around it, I don't know if there is, but just that's, again, going to shake the customers a little bit, so.
What does CPI stand for?
Consumer Price Index.
Okay. Well, that's what I've always heard it used, but it seemed like it was based on our own costs rather than the consumer price index, so I wasn't sure.
So there's a schedule of rates, assuming the 5.4% landfill increase, and the dark gray one is kind of a net-net. You'll see that we presumed the 96-gallon blended rate. So that was the previous blended rate as a result of the two changes, the CPI and the landfill, 2195.
So we don't have these. I've been trying to figure out why all of our numbers are wrong, so the stuff that we have that's 2018, okay, so we don't have any of this information that you're talking, this wasn't in the letter that you sent?
Yeah, so, and this goes back, and this really is the point, and this is why I want to make sure that I address all the questions. And I go back to what I call the moving parts. So certainly, the letter that was sent out was based on the existing rate schedule.
Okay.
And applying the CPI. And I can't remember in that letter, did we have the landfill? Okay. So this is another thing that happened year to year. A lot of times, our letter goes out before Wawa knows what we're going to do with the landfill. And so I learned to just not assume that they're going to do anything, and only apply the CPI. And then usually, right after that letter goes out, then they tee up to their council, and they do the change, and they have to change it again. And so no doubt, the initial letter, and I have it on schedule, I don't like waiting for other people, so that's why, it's the best information that comes back. And so there's two or three changes going on here, the CPI change, landfill change, and then the blended rate for the unlimited collection.
Ms. Selby.
So can we get a copy of this PowerPoint?
Yeah.
Can we get it to Lisa? Or I assume somebody already has it, because it's on the.
Yeah.
If I can get a copy of it, I'll put it on this board.
That'd be great.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. And to me, what's, I'll say, again, what's important to me is that we get, that council understands these changes.
We're a long way from that.
I have a, kind of a simple question. What am I missing here? My bill's like 45 at one. What pieces are there? And I have a recycle, and I have a 64, so that's what.
Yeah, so.
You guys owe me money?
We could go back to what the original schedule was and start stacking it up and have what it is, but if it's a, what, a 64 and recycle?
Yeah.
That's what it is, so.
It's about, okay.
Yeah.
No, 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 that's fine. No, no, I just, I'm looking at these, going.
Right. Yeah. So there's not even a recycle rate on this schedule, this was the garbage.
Okay, I can't have a personal fish.
Yeah. I guess we'll.
We'll research that.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, I'm not going to, I'm not going to get your mouth right now.
We're going to learn the origin of the problem.
So anyway, the key one in this one is the price changes, price changes, price changes. And this is kind of summary of what those are going to do. The blended rate, do we delay the CPI to match the landfill increase in March? Curbside recycle potential changes, depending on council action. And then I put that, at the end of the day, is, once we run through 12 months, 18 months, you know, maybe even two years, once we decide that the program's kind of settled in, then we do the rate study. And it's real similar to FCS, the consulting group that you folks use. I've experienced them in other utilities, electrical utilities, they do a great job. That methodology that they apply is the same methodology that we apply to the state-conditioned for recycling, so it's a very clever process. With that, I'm sure that we've used everybody, rather any of the questions, what can I do With that, I'm sure that we've used, everybody, rather any of the questions, what can I do with that? May cannot seem so confusing, that's what you do.
So I have an observation. The National Public Radio about recyclers in Portland that are essentially out of the business of plastic in total. They won't take them, and for those of you who've visited Portland with the multi-streetside recycling bins, this appears to be a problem and it's going to continue on for a bit.
Plastics were the first commodity to be pulled out. So communities are mending their plans, what's being put in is being reduced. It may be enough, it may not be enough. Again, I wish I knew, but I don't know. And so it's really, I think it comes back to the price point. What's the guess? As to what level the consumers not support the program anymore. Anyway, I don't want to offer too much opinions, I truly don't know where that's going to be. But I do think there's a lot of support for the program, there's no question. And there may be some room left in that pricing.
Ms. Sherman.
The one thing that I would want to avoid, though, is if it gets so low, so high that the subscription falls off, because then there's a kind of.
So my question, I guess, is to reiterate the conversation that you and I had a couple of weeks ago. I'm still confused with all of these changes, that, I mean, if Lauren had a sixty-four gallon and his was taken away and he got two new ones, and then I have a thirty-two and I got a new one, and I understand that I can grandfather in, now if we don't have recycling, I wouldn't choose to do that. So where is the cost of that new thirty-two gallon going? I'm assuming it's built into here, or the sixty-four that would then go away.
And so, tell me if I'm not answering the question correctly, make sure I understand. So the cart, so there's a number of things that have happened. So in the previous month, we swapped out, I swapped out carts. That program was completely not associated in any way with this unlimited collection program.
Well, I mean, I understand that, but that's still a cost that you're incurring that I'm assuming you're passing on to us.
Recycling carts?
Any cart. No, this was a, just a trash.
So I always like.
I got a new recycle cart, too, actually, didn't I?
Yep.
I got a new recycle cart.
Absolutely, yeah. So I always tell my folks, never forget to measure what you can't see. And what I mean by that is I've swapped out carts in five counties. The carts that we have, some of them have had quality issues, and then the cost that you don't see is the cost that we incur. There's no line item on a contract that if your cart breaks, that we can charge you for it, because that's not appropriate. But there's a maintenance cost. And so when I see, I've been around long enough to see problems showing up, then at that point, it's like, okay, how do I fix this? How do I get ahead of this problem that's going to cost a lot of?
I guess I would have thought that timing could have been different, to have it happen more around the same, I guess, at least for College Place, we know that these contracts are coming up, we know we're talking about unlimited, because that was all happening at the same time, and that was what was confusing to me.
Yeah. It added confusion, but I can assure you that they're completely unrelated. The program swap out carts in five different counties was a whole different thing, and it didn't, it either did or didn't line up with the approval of the contract here. So that certainly added confusion to the process.
Other questions?
So on the curbside recycling, how much notice does it take to, like, there's a proposal that we vote on that tonight, which I assume would then go into effect January 1st. If we decided, well, we're going to keep it for a while, but next September, we decide to get rid of it, is that about, is that a month and a half about the lead time that you would need, or?
I can act pretty quickly. It really comes down to customer notification, is really what it comes down to. You know, certainly, I would have to reallocate a lot of equipment, personnel, there's a cost of that, and it takes time to do that. So a little bit, you know, a couple of months would be curious, it'd be nice. But the criteria in my mind, and I presume council's mind, is really, was the proper notification to the consumer. So anyway, to give a concise answer, we can do it now, because we're kind of making some changes now with the curbsides and everything else. So we're planning to have labor ready to do a change if it's there. If it's not comfortable for the council to do that, and it happens six months, eight months, ten months down the road, a couple of months heads up is appropriate timeframe.
Thank you.
Ms. Sherman.
What about the opposite? What if we say, no more recycling, and then the market totally turns, all of a sudden, China says, forget it, don't wash anything, we'll take it.
Right.
And then, so now we've just gone a month, and now they've changed their mind.
That ramp-up time gets longer as time goes on, because there's no question. So in the short term, can I deploy that capital to put it somewhere else? Not immediately, but over time, it will get redeployed. And so then, the time cost to get back into it is, it'll take some months, numerous months, hopefully.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I wish it was simpler to start.
Moving on to action, I'm Mr. Hartwig.
So the question, it's really simple. Do you want to authorize the suspension of recycling program effective January 1? Or do you want to allow that program to continue? But you have to understand that it could end if the costs become exorbitant, or the customers start dropping off. But that's the question, do you want to, do you want to let it continue and see how it goes? Or do you want to suspend it?
Ms. Selby.
I would move that we continue the recycling program with a quarterly true-up of price.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Ms. Selby, seconded by Mr. Cleveland.
Yes.
Any further discussion?
Can you clarify, now that's to continue the recycling program?
Yes.
With a rate that would be updated every?
With the rates could be updated every quarter, and.
To reflect the market.
Right. And I'm assuming, I didn't make it part of my motion, but I'm assuming that staff and media would keep us informed if, you know, something major changes, and you're like, we've hit the down cycle or whatever, so that we could.
I mean, it's good that we can give quarterly updates. It's what we could do, we go off third-party public indexes, and so we could supply it to staff on a monthly basis as we receive it, so staff can monitor what that price is.
Mr. Peter Sullivan.
So to do that, it's not a.
Not a problem at all.
Not a big labor.
Other discussion? So Ms. Selby, would you restate your motion so that?
The motion is to continue the recycling program, the voluntary recycling program, with a quarterly true-up of the rates rather than annual.
So we have a motion, a second?
And I will reiterate that second.
Yep. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Hartwig, thank you, Mr. Deeter.
Do you have a comment?
I have a question.
Ms. Selby.
Do we need to make a motion about the blended rates and/or postponing the CPI to March?
The timing, we were just talking.
Yeah.
That's, the next thing, although not, not dressed in either one of these, was the rate setting.
Oh, yeah, it's not on here. Was that happening today?
It's not part of the.
Well, it was part of the presentation. I would be, I'd feel more comfortable if we moved this to the first meeting in December, that way we've actually got a document in front of you that's digestible.
Agreed.
And seeable.
Yeah, with all the information that would be helpful.
Is that, does that pose an undue?
It does not. We're in the process now of writing, I call propaganda, but information for the residents, and so that's kind of a timeframe, but we'll be fine, we'll be fine. And, yeah, clear direction, make sure everybody's on the same pages.
Great.
And so just to follow up, the two issues there, of course, is the timing of the Sudbury landfill increase. Would you get that, which would make sense to move that to on March 1st, as a discussion? Yeah, so my strong assumption is that next week, that council will tee that up, more likely they're going to approve it, and that should be at March 1st. So no matter what, there is going to be rate increase on March 1st. That'd give you more perfect information at that time. Yeah. The timing, though, of the movement from sixty to the ninety-six is still at January 1. That's not a point of discussion, is it? I don't think it is. I really don't think it is. So to be concise, the CPI and the landfill on March could be combined together, and then, you know, yeah, it's most logical to do the blended rate on January 1. It really is. We can keep the rates the same, but it may be confusing that everybody has the same-sized cart, but they're still getting two different rates, and then. There'd be a rate change January 1, there'd be a rate change March 1. Yeah, and I'm thinking out loud right now, I don't like this when I say it, is, okay, what if we just swap the carts out, give everybody the ninety-six gallon, keep the rate structure the same for two months, and then touch everybody once on March 1?
Take a bow there.
That's kind of, anyway, there's less movement. Hannity isn't the right way to do it, it's not, but it certainly makes things calm. I'm open to that. I would support that.
Yeah, that could not be part of the information.
Yeah, I think the staff, I would ask the staff to kind of come up with some options.
We're not going to do it. Yeah, exactly, exactly. And as I was thinking out loud, it's okay, because what we're talking about here, we're talking about long-term, rising long-term things, so what's a couple of months? Yeah, yeah.
Maybe not be the right place for this, but suggestion on the outreach part, I have the terrible habit, along with probably many other people, that since I'm on automatic pay, don't actually open my bills very often. So, so all those nice little inserts, I never read them. But I did get at another place, when I got a recycle bin, they have a little, and it was enclosed in plastic, so it could just be taped on, on the lid that said, what could go in my recycling? I read that. So, you know, rather than sending it all in bills, it might make sense when we're sending out all the new ninety-sixes, to slap a thing on top and say, hey, you got unlimited, this is what it means, blah, blah, blah.
And I absolutely agree with that.
But it's a, it's a big workload.
Well, it's workload, and then I would want to.
Do you want to volunteer?
I have students.
I would want to combine that with the labor that's going to do the swap, which is really going to happen pretty quickly. So I don't know if you can get a decision and then go to press with that.
Well, no, I wasn't talking about the rates so much as the rules that you talked about, whereas like, you can do, it's unlimited now.
Three feet away.
You can do four tires a year, three feet away, all of that, that little, like, hang tag looking thing, that would be perfect.
Understand.
Not the rate stuff, no, that's not going to be fun.
Understand.
And as long as you suck it out automatically on my bank account, I may not even notice for it.
Change hers at forty-five and pick it up, and you're all good.
Moving right along.
My wife saw it.
Chief Winter, volunteer firefighter stipend system revision.
All I want is to see my account.
Good evening, now that you're worn out.
Oh, we're just warming up.
I'm asking for no money, I'm just asking for a different way that we pay our volunteers who were doing this the last time. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Definitely a public servant.
I wasn't the person that was more, that there would be more.
Next year, if the budget's.
Okay, you're talking about, okay, I'm sorry.
This is just how we pay, not what we pay.
I see. I was thinking.
So you're just looking for a motion to approve what you told us last time?
Yes.
Well, if I could manage to bring that up as a boost.
Yeah, I know, everything's kind of going slow.
I'll motion to approve ordinance number, am I on the right one? One seven dash oh four seven, that changes the way the city reverses volunteer firefighters, and EMTs based on a point system.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Cleveland, seconded by Ms. Nyhagen, who was just a hair faster than Ms. Selby. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Chief Winter.
Thank you, you do a good job.
Mr. Gordon, I would preface this by saying, the requirements for the drinking water state revolving fund are a system that the Eastern Roman Empire would be very proud of. The requirements are so Byzantine that I would ask that any motions be read directly from.
Recommended action.
From this, so that we, so that Ms. Nysel can jump through all of the hoops tomorrow morning, and they can, these can get approved, should you wish. With that said, Mr. Gordon.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, appreciate that. I'll make this brief. This is, really, we have two related agenda items here, according to two, because they're two separate loan applications. If you recall, we were in the process of moving forward with the system Mars consolidation with CCF. We acquired, or we received a three million dollar loan from Department of Health to help finance that. That wasn't the full problem out, it got caught up in the capital budget quandary in Olympia. And so that, that project is on hold until that gets resolved. The problem is, we've got three, only three wells in the city, and of course, two in Marat, or one of them is on its way out, one of them is out now. So that means we've got just one sure source of water. We need to move forward and get something in the ground. So what we've done is, we're applying for a, well, let me back up. The consolidation project, we had a three million dollar loan, but it's a four point two million dollar project, so we're going to need a second loan to cover that residual amount. But in addition to that, we're doing another loan for this well number two relocation. And that's the first agenda item, I'm happy for you. It's about two point three million dollars. We're requesting a one point eight million dollar loan, considering they're responsible for the remainder of that, if we can't come up with other, some other funding venue. The terms of this particular loan are not as attractive as the one for the consolidation projects. It's based upon about, I think about a one point five percent loan rate, there is a one percent fee, and there's also not the fifty percent forgiveness, which makes the consolidation loans so attractive. So we have this one already budgeted, if you recall, when we took out the water bonding that we did just a few months ago. This particular project was covered underneath that bonding, and there should be no rate increase as a result of that. In fact, one of the appendices exhibits should provide that background for you. So we're covered, and one of the things I want to make sure we do in this process is Department of Health in the application, if you bothered to read it, all four hundred and, I think this one's only three hundred and twenty pages. The next one's four hundred and thirty pages, but if you read through that, it needs three things. One is, they need to know tonight that you approved the application for this loan. Two, they need to know that you've approved the rate increase for this loan, which in this case, there is none, because we did the bonding. And the third is, you need to understand that there's, they expect you to be willing to raise rates if it turns out that we need to, to be able to cover the loan cost. So that's, that's the nature of the action item that's on your agenda item there, or your agenda bill, really, to approve the loan. Two, to acknowledge that you've already basically approved the rate that supports the loan. And three, to also acknowledge that, and agree that if there are costs, or something comes in different, you're willing to raise rates to cover the cost of that loan. They need that assurance before they can accept our application. So that's the first one. And so if there are any questions on that, I can try and answer those now, or if that's pretty clear.
Let's do, let's do one at a time.
Okay, first one. This will be for well number two relocation.
Going to do away with my well. I'm forced to.
I apologize for that.
Questions for Mr. Gordon.
So you want this one first?
Marge is going to have to make a motion, because our air units are all down.
Mine's not.
Well, we can read on Michael's, but don't click on anything else.
How is this motion identified? What's it called? Is it the?
This is, this is a GND Bill five point zero three, AB seventeen two seven one.
Okay, that's, you make the motion to approve the application for twenty seventeen drinking water state revolving fund, well number two relocation loan, specifically acknowledging, one, one that the water revenue bond obligation approved on September eleven, twenty seventeen, included the expenditures for repayment of this loan, and two, that other rate increases may be necessary to ensure repayment of the loan obligations.
I think that's the correction, it's September twelve, twenty seventeen?
What'd I say?
September eleven.
September twelve, yes, okay, September twelve, twenty seventeen.
With that part.
I'm sorry, was the third item listed that we would, the willingness to increase the rates?
Yeah, that's, that's.
That's the next one.
That's the next.
So it's been moved by Ms. Selby, is there a second? So, it's been moved by Ms. Selby, is there a second?
It was moved by Ms. Nyhagen. I second it.
And seconded by Ms. Selby, any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Gordon, agenda bill 17272, 2017 drinking water state revolving fund, water system consolidation loan application.
Mayor, this is the same story, okay? This is just the second loan to finish off that water system consolidation project. The loan is essentially the same format, and the requirements are the same. So, what we're looking at under this loan would be to fund the remaining portion of that consolidation, to the amount of about 1.2 million. This will be a second loan. This one will be 50% forgivable. We will not have a loan fee associated with it, and we'll have a lower loan rate of about 1%. So, it's a better, has a much better rate and loan structure for us. It is under the consolidation program, we would expect to get that 50% forgiveness on the loan principal. But the same thing applies as it does with previous application. You need to know that you approved the application, you need to know that you have approved the rate to support the loan, and you need to acknowledge in the future that if there is a need to raise rates, that you're capable and willing to do that.
So, you can't do it?
Oh, no, I have a question.
Ms. Sherman.
These are, all these things that he's talking about, these are all part of, in the budget, we've already addressed these.
Well, are you talking about, you're saying the D O H money in places that are in your bond, money for a long term?
For well number two, the revenue bond was to be used to support the loan repayment, is my understanding. Yeah. If you look at the appendix, exhibit 2 and 3, I think we got that statement.
It may or may not be part of our budget?
It's part of the budget.
Yeah, we're not understanding how this is going to happen.
Yeah.
Motion? Ready for a motion?
Question? Yeah.
Okay.
Questions?
Yeah. If, so, we were going to apply for a loan here, and then if the Department of Health loan goes through, we pay that off, or am I misunderstanding?
That was my understanding, yes.
Okay.
That there would not need to be any rate increase associated with taking on this project.
Okay.
Because of that bond.
Okay. So, we're using one loan to pay for the other?
What's that?
We're using one, the Department of Health loan to pay for this bond, or the...
We're paying, my understanding is a loan would be paying for the Department of Health loan, in addition to our part of whatever we needed to pay.
Oh, okay, I see, I see. Yeah, that's making sense.
Ready?
Is there a motion?
Can you say it in a way that I can understand? Because I'm missing something.
There's a whole lot of ways. The original bond is just, yeah, the 4.6 million, the bond issue we approved, is there a piece of that?
That we bonded, what?
Four and a half million.
Four and a half million, four and a half million dollars. We're, we're, the actual, the actual cost of these loans are cheaper than that, and we'll use these loans to pay back the bond monies that we borrow through the bank.
And again, that's the total cost.
Yeah, that's it?
Yeah.
Okay.
The total cost of this project is 2.3 million, which is well within the amount of the bond.
Yeah.
And we, well, and I think the missing piece, if I'm understanding this correctly, we, part of the bond is for other things, the splitting and whatnot. And so, we won't pay the full bonds back, but we actually, because we couldn't get the Department of Health money in time, we upped our bond amount.
Increased the, yeah.
So, that, so the bond is serving partially as a bridge loan, and partially as a loan on its own.
Perfect.
Thank you.
And capsulates.
And just, not to confuse things.
Stop, stop, stop. No.
I don't think worse.
I think, I think, Ms. Selby.
Oh, I just have a technical comment. It appears that it's not the internet that's down, but board docs.
What?
For some of us.
Mine finally just came up.
Did yours finally come back? Mine is not back yet.
It takes, it takes a little while.
Mine has been working okay, but I'm hesitant to like, click on a bunch of those.
I've included my computer.
But I have this one.
Is there a motion?
I, okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve application for 2017 drinking water state revolving fund, system consolidation loan, specifically acknowledging, one, that the rate increase approved on October 11, 2016.
This is for the...
Okay, just a second. 2016 included the expenditures for repayment of this loan, and two, that the, that other rate increases may be necessary to ensure repayment of the loan obligations.
Second. It's been moved by Ms. Sherman, seconded by Mr. Cleveland, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Mr. Bizzetello, agenda bill 717273, update of Cal State's municipal code 3.16 utility tax.
Let me please click on the PowerPoint. Okay. Okay, let's go to the next slide here. Okay, so, this is a subject, maybe we discussed the last couple of budget workshops, and it goes all the way back in October, when we identified that there was a revenue versus expense issue manifesting within the current expense and the street funds, which really is an extension of current expense. So, I just want to provide a little bit of history, and then discuss our staffing issues, and how this all came about. So, basis for this is in the strategic plan that was adopted earlier this year on page 13. One of the goals is optimal operations, and the city is staffed to reflect nationally recognized human resource levels. A couple months ago, we were honored to have the assistance of Washington Association of Sheriffs and Police Chiefs do a loaned executive management assistance program, LEMAP, and that really provides an overview on essentially police department operations. And one of the comments that they said within this report that was shared with council a while back, on page 15, is, is clear that CPPD has insufficient staff and provide one officer, street coverage on a 24/7 basis. This conclusion does not begin to broach the topics of officer safety, and 24/7 supervision is customary and accepted by most Washington police agencies. The picture you see to your right is some flyers that were shared with city council about a week or so ago, and it's been online, and really shared via social media to get the word out there to folks of what we're thinking. Next slide. Okay, so, the reoccurring structural budget deficit is $285,000, if you were to look at that initial proposal that we proposed back in late October, which was the addition of a police officer in the community development assistant. It's down to $125,000 when you take out the additional two positions. So, that means maintaining staff's quo, you're still basically a $125,000 deficit in current expense. October 24, we had the preliminary budget hearing. November 2, we had the first budget workshop, and we really drilled into the whole reoccurring expense versus revenue issue, revenue options, and then we were directed to essentially drill deeper into water and wastewater utility tax, and solid waste cable tax issues. Next slide, okay. November 9, we presented information on the utility taxes. We were directed to draft proposal to 10% water and wastewater utilities. Please keep in mind, we're one of the only cities, actually, so far, the only city I've found that doesn't have that. And then increase from 6 to 10% the tax on solid waste and cable. Main reason is because, as we discussed in those meetings, and it's been in the flyers that were released online, social media, in the news lettering, out in the lobby, there are manifesting issues across the departments. If you, we'll get into some graphs to show historic staffing trends, but it isn't like we're creating new positions here. These were positions as we went through economic difficulties and so forth, we essentially held the positions vacant, and there's issues with the fire, having a fire training officer, fire does what they can, but we, that's empty right now. And then there's really an immediate need for two officers and a community development assistant. Next slide. Okay, so, this goes into need for positions, and to look back a little bit historically. So, on a full-time equivalent level, the height of full-time positions at the city was 54.05 in 2008. When you look at part-time positions, it ends up going up to around 60. However, from full-time equivalents, this decreased all the way down to 35 this year. Of that, keep in mind that six of the 54 were originally in the wastewater utility, and that's, that's now a contractor that does that. So, you're still talking about a decrease from 48 to 35, even when you take out wastewater. So, it isn't like it can just be pointed to wastewater. The proposals bring back some of these positions, because they really were needed, and we're having, we're having difficulty functioning without them. Just to provide a little snapshot, back when these positions existed 10 years ago, our city population was about 7,600. Our population's now 9,440. And we'll go over some comparable cities, it shows that we're actually understaffed compared to even bigger ones. So, police department difficulty covering all shifts for 24/7 coverage. There have been concerns related to me about officer safety. We're trying to minimize revolving door effect of talent. When I started here, there were two police officers that left for greener pastures, and especially with police officer positions, there's a sunk cost with that, because you have to send them to the training academy, and then get them outfitted, it ends up a good $20,000 for each one. And when you account for training time, where they're actually under tutelage of senior staff before they can go out on their own, I would guarantee you that number would mushroom up to 40. So, there is a sunk cost to this, so we really need to work on our retention, that's why we need the additional officers. As I said, the LEMAP, I found insufficient staffing, I quoted that earlier. We have an immediate need of two additional officers. Next slide. Fire department. When we went over the initial budget workshop, I did a bit of injustice, I delved more into fire issue. We were concentrating on police and community development, but this is very important. Really, the city gets a bargain with this, because a lot of cities are a fire district, but keep in mind, while on your, while on your tax bill, the city can say, oh, well, we aren't paying for fire, the fact of matter is, you're paying a separate property tax levy on a lot of places for fire. Here, it's included, which is a nice bargain, it's in the same property tax amount. So, majority of our fire department is 40 volunteers. We have a good-sized department, and because of our dedicated staff, we're able to have a lot of volunteers here, which I, which I'm amazed by, that's very, very have 40. And it's supported by two paid firefighters and a fire chief. It exists on current expense revenues. Here, it isn't like there's a property tax levy for this. It shares same pot of money with police in general, city operations. We really need to bring back one training officer. We used to have this, that position was vacated a while ago, and we'll go over that in the charts. And I would argue that there is a trickle-down effect of saving money here, because with our fire department with excellent work they've been doing, the insurance class rating for WSRB, that's Washington Survey Ratings Bureau, we went from a five to a four, where we're on the same rating as Wall Wall, and they're fully paid. And we only have a couple of full-timers, so they're doing a great job, but we likely will lose this if we aren't able to get that training officer back, because you get a lot of points for the training, and we're doing the best that we can. But while a person completely dedicated to training, there's gaps. Next one, community development. This one, I view as like investing in the future. Good news is that development activity is greatly picking up. There's big developments on the horizon with the recent acceleration, a lot of other business activities. There is a threat to this, though. Time is money for a lot of these developers, and there used to be a front office person at the window who would give advice on filing building permits, navigating the development process. That position was vacated, just as part of the recession, and trying to narrow down revenue versus expense a while ago. The issue is with that, is we have development applications going between staff, but there's, there's little cracks in the process, when you don't have someone in the front helping to steer stuff. And with that, some of the developers, they have expressed the fact that, again, time's money, and they would like us to move quicker. My fear is if we don't bring that position back, that we could be forfeiting additional tax revenues via some nice property tax and sales tax, that can then, can be used to help operations, and can minimize the ability where we may have asked for money in the future. That could help prevent that, because we'll increase our tax base. So, it's really an investment in the future. So, next slide. Now, I just want to go into a couple of graphs, and I very quickly went back into the annals of time to try to get this, and make a couple of calls to our comparable cities today, find out their anticipated staffing levels for 2018. So, this is hot off the presses, all this stuff. So, city staffing levels from 2006, 2017, as you can see, we went from a high of about 54.05, full-time equivalents, in 2008 to 2009, till we're, now, we're down to 35. So, this is significant trend down. Keep in mind, our population's gone from 7,600 up to 9,400. So, it, little interesting reverse correlation there. Next one, budgeted police staffing. That has been a little bit of a roller coaster over the years, going from 16 down to around like 13 right now, and because we've had that revolving door effect, the amount of full-time officers we share about on the streets, they're busy being trained up in our training program, and it creates issues having people out on the street. So, we really are having issues having the 24/7 staffing, so we really do need those extra two positions.
I have a question.
Yeah.
May we, the police, we have to put them through the training, there's expenses that you discussed earlier. What about the thought of a sign-on bonus to bring in an experienced officer, with the understanding that they would, agreement that they would stay for two to three years? In other words, the cost put into the training, et cetera, et cetera, instead of this, put into a bonus, is that appropriate, or is that...
Technically, in our fee schedule, we actually have the ability to do that right now. The problem is, in this era, police officers are, I mean, there's a lot of positions open all over the state, and even with the ability that we would have to incentivize like that, we still have trouble competing against Wall Wall, because they have deeper pockets. So, although we have the ability to do that, in a couple of cases, we tried to offer that, it still hasn't really paid dividends because of the deeper pockets. At the same time, we're looking for people, Wall Wall, and Pasco, and you name it, as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Next slide. Fire department staffing going 2006, 2017. As you could see, back in 2006, we had five full-time equivalents, and then as the recession was in full effect, that went down to four in 2010. And then as the recession was in full effect, that went down to four in 2010. And then it remained static at three from 2011 onward. So similar downward trajectory. So that's that. Planning staff with this case, keep in mind, back in 2007, there used to be that development assistant. There was a community development director and then John, Kathy Bowman retired. The front office person for community development essentially left. And that, and that was held vacant. And the planning staff went from a team of three down to a team of one from 2007 over 2017. So again, similar downward trajectory. Next slides I think are pretty interesting. This I made a couple of calls and just got today. This is comparable cities and how we establish comparable cities is if a city ever goes through arbitration in union negotiations, arbitrator ends up settling the cities from which you're most comparable. And that's how you're able to set wages if it gets to that level. And back in 2009, there was arbitration at City of College Place. So they set the cities we're most comparable to. So these were ones I was able to make contact with today. So College Place 2017, as you can see, we're down around the 13 mark. However, a lot of our comparables are much higher. So City of Othello, keep in mind, Othello's population is around our historic population in 2000. They have 7,600 level there, around 20. Tappanish is 15. Liberty Lake is similar to us. Cheney, they're around 16. Airway Heights is 16. So as you can see, we're on the lower side with this. Next. Okay, fire department staffing. This, this was a significant challenge to try to come up with because not all cities are the same in this department. And a couple of cities are in districts that are comparable. So then the question becomes if you're a fire district, use a fire chief. Please tell me how many of the positions could you technically assign with the monies you get from the said city to represent that? So I ended up giving ballpark answers today, so tried my best here. But College Place is around three. Othello is a fire district. They're about four. Tappanish is around six. Liberty Lake is a dis, is a Spokane Valley fire district. They said the staffing that's representative of Liberty Lakes around 17. Afraida is around the same number as us, the three. East Wenatchee is a fire district, again, around seven. Cheney, they're a department within the city and they have a university as well, so quite comparable. 10. And then Airway Heights is four. Next slide. Okay, and then the planning staffing. So right now we're at one. And keep in mind for planning, I was looking at purely from the planning nexus. You could group in building and community development, but I was trying to do apples to apples. So I did the best I could here. The only one that matches us really is Tappanish with the one-to-one. Everyone else is at two or three for planning. And I would argue, if you look at the population growth rates, they aren't near our growth rate, going from 7,600 up to 9,440. So that's a concern. Next slide. This is going to start going into the stuff we went over the last couple workshops. I'll just reiterate to show that really we aren't coming out of a clear blue sky with this. With the water utility tax, it's very common. Pasco's 8%, Othello's 10. And they use it to supplement the operations for police, community development, other general fund type operations. Cheney's 11, Richland's 12, Wal-Wal is 13, West Richland's 15. And then Tappanish goes all the way up to 33%, but they have some extenuating circumstances because they're by the Yakima Reservation and there, and there's some revenue issues there. Wastewater utility tax, next slide. Pasco's 8.5%, Richland's 10 and a half, Cheney's 11, Wal-Wal's 13, West Richland's 13.5, Clarkston's 14, Othello's 15. And it goes all the way up to Tappanish again at the 33%. Next slide, okay. Revenue utility tax, revenue per percent. So for every 1%, we would get a little over 46,000 from College Place utility customers. But then the customers of those other utility districts which fall inside corporate limits would also pay this. So, so you can see the various rates on the chart here. Okay, next slide. Cable and solid waste utility taxes, we, we did a little chart here. Keep in mind, we already collect 6% on cable and the solid waste. So this just shows for every 1% what you can make on solid waste and cable. 9,167 solid waste and cable, 11,667 per every 1%. So next slide. And then to reiterate some of the biggest, biggest issues we have right now. As far as a front office person to answer questions about permitting and to help expedite permits, development review, that typically 75,000. These prices take into account salary, but then also your fringe benefits and so forth. So it's all inclusive of that. Police officer is 95,000 each. Fire department training officer is also 95,000 apiece. Another piece of efficiency which we're using, which we're going to try for because that helps lessen the amount of officers you have to hire in the near term is the take-home vehicle program where I was previously at in Colfax. We use that because it increases efficiency. When you have a pool of police vehicles, you have to check them out. And there's a, there's a process involved. Whereas if it's assigned to the person immediately, once they leave the house, they are on duty. And there's this greater efficiency. And then with the folks living in the community, also a sense of safety. If you see the police vehicle being parked in a driveway, it just helps with their sense of safety.
Can you go back to solid waste?
Yeah. Yep.
What is solid waste?
Solid waste is garbage.
It's basing?
Yeah.
So the timing of this, is this a, I don't even want to.
Yeah.
So that, that will be taken into consideration?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Mike.
Yep. Okay, next slide. Okay, so summary of all this is if you put the 10% utility tax on water and wastewater, it brings in 492,000, a little bit more than that. Raising the cable is a little bit north of 46,000. Solid waste is a little north of 36. And the additional revenue will allow us to have these positions. And keep in mind, these were positions that the city once had and they've just been vacated. So it's filling positions that used to exist when we had less of a population. And it puts the city on a more sustainable trajectory. Because one of the issues here, especially in the state of Washington, is if you're in other states, you have different levels, levers you can pull on property tax, sales tax, things like that. Because you have that 1% property tax cap here. And then your typical costs of running a city are climbing 3% or 4% a year. And then there's limits on the sales tax and very few other revenue streams. You're really boxed in on current expense. So really, the only thing you can really delve into really is the utility taxes. Or, or beyond that, you have the transportation benefit district tabs. But the problem is it doesn't really deal with the immediate situation we have at hand right now. So you really have the utility tax where that becomes a situation of not trying to guess on a sustainable trajectory. And I mean, ultimately, longer term, that becomes, probably middle term, that becomes a discussion then about what services do you want to provide or not at that juncture.
Other questions for Mr. Mizutello? Ms. Sherman?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 17-048, amending chapter 3.16 utility tax of the College Place Municipal Code.
Plaguing.
It's been moved by Ms. Sherman, seconded by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion?
I just want to comment how necessary, like supporting our fire department and the police as well as, you know, going into our development here is just how important it is.
Thank you.
And how much we appreciate both of you for all that you do.
I would just like to say this has been a very interesting year. There's been a lot of effort put in. Personally thank Mr. Mizutello and the staff for all the work they did in putting this together. Seeing no further discussion? All in favor, please.